Give me a nod, Lindsey, when you're ready. Good morning, everybody. This is the rescheduled Board of County Commissioners meeting from June 3rd. Today is June 10th. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the public. And to the Constitution, the Constitution, the liberty of each other and all.
Thank you. Are there any additions or edits to our agenda for today?
None.
Thank you. The agenda will stand as presented. Constituent time. If anybody has room or online, like to visit commissioners. Lindsey, anybody online?
Yes.
Where is everything? Thank you. We'll turn it over to County Clerk Terry Stevenson. Good morning.
I have an 2025 BLCC regular meeting. Were there any additions, changes, or additions?
I have none.
None? Very good.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Business.
First, for your consideration, consideration of two additional JL FTEs for the Sheriff's Office with the expansion. We have Captain Kano, Sheriff Taylor under Sheriff Quinn, or Jevak, and Leona Anderson here for presentation.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Is your mic on, Sheriff?
Yes, thank you. Let me turn my phone off, though.
And the word on the street is you've hired Deputy Investigator Leona Anderson to help you out.
Between bag and bag. Yeah, it's about six feet deep.
Boy, we've got.
Just wanted to make an announcement for the people online. We are having a little bit of camera trouble, so stick with us. I hope the audio is okay, but our camera is a little bit wonky.
A good description. Look at the lights all their way around.
Yeah.
For exit.
All right, go ahead.
Well, good morning, Commissioners. Good morning. So as you're aware, our remodel project downstairs in the jail has been operational for about three months now. And we've got a pretty good idea on how things are flowing. We're quickly realizing that the six additional deputies that we hired for opening isn't quite making it. They've had to shut down a couple of times because there wasn't enough staffing to safely operate both upstairs and downstairs. And so we're here today to ask for your consideration for two additional detention deputies. And I asked Captain Kano to speak to the needs and problems and what two additional deputies could help with.
So currently, you know, with us shut down, it, our inmate-to-deputy ratio is not good. When we were running the downstairs and the upstairs, you know, I had two deputies downstairs, two deputy upstairs. You know, throughout the day, we got a lot of things going. You know, we got court hearings. We have, you know, take inmates over in person. We have transports. And on this one particular day, we had, you know, myself in court with an inmate. My transport deputy was gone on a transport. That left us with four deputies total. And at that time upstairs, we had, I think, forty-six inmates to my two deputies upstairs, running the upstairs. Plus, we still have to run our regular court dockets, you know, upstairs with our inmates. That puts two deputies in the courtroom with, you know, three inmates, four inmates at a time. Still have to stay on top of our security checks that we do every thirty minutes to make sure all the inmates are safe and secure and they're not doing anything to harm themselves or others. Yeah, that is our big concern there is, you know, just safety for my staff and then staying on top of our security checks. I believe, you know, with these additional two FTEs, that gives us, this would give us teams of seven for each group that we have. And we would be able to function and run the upstairs and downstairs safely and properly.
Thank you, Captain. I have two questions for you. What is the industry standard for deputy inmate on the ratio? One to twenty-three seems too high on the inmate side.
Yeah. You know, as far as a standard, I didn't have a chance to look, so I couldn't give you a definite answer on that, so I apologize. I don't, I don't know what the standard would be.
One to twenty seems better, but I don't know what the standard is either.
Yeah, I'll have to look and I can let you know.
Would you please?
Yes, sir.
Second question is, how would we fit these two new FTEs into our budget so that we are fiscally responsible also?
That is why Leon is here. So as of May 31st, 2025, the Safety Improvement Fund, which is where Sheriff Taylor wants to take the funds out, to use this, was at thirty-eight point five percent expended, and they should be no more than forty-one percent. And that is adding the six additional that we did this year. So they're in good shape budget-wise. Financially, this program, Safety Improvement, for the last five years, the end of the first year, we had a cash balance of nine hundred and sixty-nine thousand, four sixty-four. And now in May of twenty-five, we have four million, four hundred and thirty-two thousand, two hundred and fifteen. The average pay for two detention officers is salary nine thousand, six forty-eight for one per year and benefits one thousand, nine thirty-two per year, per month, sorry. And those amounts do not include any CRA match of family or family insurance. So the total annual would be around a hundred and forty thousand a year for two more. And the Safety Improvement sales tax is in the middle of five of ten years. So we would still have five and a half more years to go with these funds. And if it continues to increase, I anticipate that there's going to still be funding left at the end of the sales tax. And then they're probably going to try and continue that. And that is the only fallback that I see in this is that that sales tax is gone in 2030. I still say they'll still have some extra cash there, but once that cash is gone, where would that funding come from? And that, we're looking way down the road when I'm not going to be here, so. It'll be Craig's problem.
So my, my plan and my theory in this is, is this is a way to get us two additional deputies, NAP, to get them hired, trained, and functional. I would also like to get with Robbie and the board and discuss twenty, twenty-six budget and try to see out of this, out of the FTEs that we have right now. I think there's what's six or seven that are already in back to batch.
It's six.
It's like twelve?
Yeah.
Is that any?
Yeah, because we added six this, in this.
Right. So twelve FTEs that were taken out of the sales tax now. And so if we put two more in there, it would be fourteen. So I want to have that discussion for twenty-twenty-six budget purposes about whether we start moving some of those, those FTEs into the general fund, out of the back of the badge, just because of the five years that's left on.
That would be a good discussion to have, Sheriff. Other questions for the Captain or the Sheriff on this request?
I don't know if I have any questions. It's just, you know, it's kind of a, it's almost a no-brainer at this point because the safety of your deputies and the inmates has got to be priority number one. So we, we have, we have to address that for sure. And you can't have a situation like you're describing on an ongoing basis. And things are going to hit you from time to time, but you can't be having that happen once or twice a week. That's just not acceptable, so.
When the numbers are good, when we have, you know, nobody's in training, nobody's on vacation, staffing levels were a hundred percent. You know, things are pretty stable. It's just when you have all these extra things that goes on in the detention facility. And if somebody's out, one or two deputies out on PTO, somebody's sick, somebody's on transports, you know, then it just goes, yeah, it just snowballs.
Lot of demands on the time.
Yeah, the ongoing discussion of where it's going to come next year and the year after and the year after those, we need to for sure add to the docket. But the immediate, what you're talking about now is, you know, ASAP. This is probably the way to do that, so.
Now, the questions I had have been answered, but like you say, down the road, you know. And the inmate population probably will not go down. It's probably just going to continue. We need to address that. Like I say, safety for the officers plus safety for the inmates. That's a big concern. Don't want anything to happen to them.
The jail is the biggest liability the county has, you know. And the security checks that we do over there every thirty minutes is for a reason. You know, and we just need to make sure we have the manpower. We don't want to get an inmate hurt. We don't want to get a detention officer. We just need to be mindful of those things and do what we need to do to ensure that. Right?
Well, Commissioners, this is an action item. What would be your will for here?
So I move that we approve additional funding for the Sheriff's Department to hire two additional full-time employees for the Sheriff's Office.
I will second that motion.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I hope you find some good candidates.
Can we put my application in?
Sure, I'll take it. She's got all the training. She's ready to go. She's a no-brainer. I mean, she's a fully qualified.
Commissioner, what's the best way out of the hole?
Exit stage left.
Next item on again.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, guys.
Do give me that ratio.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Sheriff, we are going to recognize Devin Rupel later in the meeting here for Law Enforcement Officer of the Year.
Oh, okay.
We, I know we did it at the big meeting, but Commissioner would like to recognize him and Senator Reeves.
You bring the dog over with you.
You know, I don't know that. I hope so. I'm about fifteen.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Carrie indicated she's helping someone right now. Let's move to item number three. Consideration to adopt a resolution designating the Stockholm House to the Historic Landmark Register. You approved the actual document in a previous BLCC meeting. It does require a resolution. Terry Stevenson, clerk, then drafted the resolution. It was reviewed by County Attorney John Bear and included in this packet.
Questions on this, gentlemen?
Seems like a reasonable request. Historic building.
This would be twenty-twenty-five, R seventeen.
R seventeen.
Always celebrate. Again, another action item here.
Okay, I will make a motion that we approve Resolution twenty-twenty-five, R seventeen, designating the Stockholm House to the Historic Landmark Register.
I second that.
Let's add to that motion and ratify signature.
We have.
We have on the application.
Oh.
Yeah. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So done. We just passed.
Okay. Yes, Director Carrie Durco would like to move this to the next meeting. She indicates she will be longer helping this individual, which she helped. That's.
That works.
Next for your consideration is to adopt a resolution authorizing the support and submission of a grant application and letter of support for a Great Outdoors Colorado Grant for the Delta County Nature Connection. It, well, money is the pass-through for the GOPO event. And with that, then each time the Nature Connection puts forward a project, we do need to authorize that Delta County is okay with this process via a resolution and support.
It has become pretty standard for us, gentlemen. Is there any questions on this?
It's a good fund. Way to get some money and use them for some outdoor activities.
And this will be eighteen.
Well, I move that we pass a resolution authorizing the support and submission of a grant application for a Great Outdoors Colorado Grant for the Delta County Nature Connection Project. Be Resolution Number twenty-twenty-five dash R dash eighteen.
I will second the motion.
Anything else? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Did you have that resolution?
I do. Oh, I have to go, sorry.
Good morning, Mr. Vader.
Morning. He was late. Do you think we should notify him of all the things we've already?
I already got here. I was called in. I called in.
Oh, you let me relax down.
Traffic.
Can't even snowball you today, huh?
And with John Bear being out today, would you want to introduce the next one or you are to? Okay.
Methane. Quality control.
Okay, moving on to item number five then, for your consideration and participation in potential cost share in a coalition of local governments for a coordinated response to the Colorado Air Quality Control Commission proposed Regulation Thirty-One involving the control of methane emissions from solid waste landfills. Commissioner Craig Fuller and County Attorney John Bear have been participating. County Attorney John Bear indicates that he has been on board with several initial meetings with multiple, around fourteen other local governments, including counties, regarding the proposed landfill methane rules. There is considerable concern about the rules and the onerous impact of the monitoring and potential mitigation on local counties. The group, the coalition, is being led primarily by Mesa and Garfield County, is recommending that a coalition be formed and retain legal counsel to have input on the rulemaking process. The coalition approach is increase the ability to have impact and make the proposed rules more workable for rural counties. Mesa and Garfield County are leading the effort into retain Beatty and Wozniak as a law firm and ask that each county participate in this cost. Asking for your potential to sign on to this coalition. Mr. Fuller, anything to add?
Nothing really, other than the fact that we've been, we've been tracking this regulation for several months now. And it seems like the Air Quality Control Commission is on a fast track to propose this, pushing this proposed regulation through. And it's going to be a huge impact on, on all the landfills across the state. And so we have to, in my opinion, we need to jump on board and try to get some changes to the regulation. They're asking that we come up with three particular items that we're particularly opposed to. And after sifting through seventy-five pages worth of this regulation, it's kind of hard to narrow it down to three, but the regulation itself is just completely over the top. And the cost to the county, not just us, but all the counties and agencies across the state that are going to have to deal with this is staggering. So I feel like we need to jump on board with Mesa and Garfield and the rest and do our part to make sure that the landfill is, is left alone, operational for our citizens. And we just keep, keep trudging along and try to get this thing revamped or redone or throw it out altogether. But that probably will not happen. I think, I think we need, I think we need to participate.
Commissioner, the source of funding for the potential cost share would be the landfill, the Enterprise Fund, so.
Thank you. Question, Elaine?
Yes, sounds like a very good idea. And a couple of things that I had after reading through the methane is that, you know, they addressed landfills that have been closed and have met the standards and been signed off by the EPA and other agencies. That, why should they have to go through if a methane capture project, when they met all of the requirements and got the EPA to sign off, you know, from years ago? Why are they opening those back up? Another thing is all the equipment that is involved in methane capture with the filters and everything. Have the state pay for that if they want us to monitor this, have them provide and finance the, all the equipment that's going to be necessary in going forward with a project of this scale. I know in a meeting, it's been three or four years ago, that La Plata County there in Durango, and I believe it was a closed landfill. The CP, CDPHE came and said, well, you need to do this and that. And one commissioner said, we're drilling more holes, just like we were an oil company trying to satisfy the requirements from the state and just hundreds of thousands of dollars that they've spent just drilling the test holes to meet the requirement. And it's going to be a fiscal burden to the county. And, but like I say, even the landfills that have been closed for decades, they would be open up to this.
Well, gentlemen, it's no secret what my thought on this is. This is more unfunded mandates and overreach coming out of our CDPHE and AQCD. It'd be my recommendation that we approve the participation and cost share in this not to exceed ten thousand. And let's get on with this. I'm really concerned about the viability of Adobe Buttes landfill if we continue to have things like this.
And you know, they, this year they came up with the methane. Well, down the road, what else are they going to find and come up with?
There has not been a stop to the continued overregulation.
Well, I move that we participate in the cost share along with the other counties for the Colorado Air Quality Commissioners' Proposed Regulation Thirty-One, not to exceed ten thousand dollars.
I will second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So done. Thank you.
Next for your consideration is the appointment of Victoria Gran Grasnick to the Colorado State University Extension Tri River Area Advisory Committee. These terms are for three years.
Looking at her application to serve on this board, it's quite, very impressed. I would recommend we appoint Ms. Grasnick for this three-year term.
She seems very well-qualified for that and has a vested interest in the area.
I agree. I will make a motion that we appoint Victoria Grasnick to the CSU Extension Tri River Advisory Committee for a period of three years, you said? Three year, for the three-year appointment.
I second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So done.
Thank you.
Who will be letting Ms. Grasnick know that you got that, Lindsey? Thank you. Very good.
Next is Lindsey, review of the calendar.
Could you speak up a little bit then?
We have a tag in the room, so it's a little distracting. I'm a good note. Okay, so we are in June tenth. Today we work session for psychedelics. On Friday, the thirteenth, there is a fire shredder, fire shredding meeting.
I'm trying to confirm that, so. Keep tuned on that. It would be at two-thirty so far.
We're at.
Don't know that yet.
Okay.
Then next Tuesday, the seventeenth, is our next Board of County Commissioners meeting. We also have a road and bridge work session that day and a board and club meeting. Saturday, the twenty-first, we have our North Bar Miners Trail grand opening celebration. That begins at ten AM. That is at the trailhead at the Fairgrounds Bridge. Everyone is welcome. It's going to be a big celebration. Please join us there and.
What time is Commissioner Lane signed up to go down the slide into the pool? Do you have that down?
Commissioner Lane is going to get some of the free bike rentals that Nature Connection is providing and going to ride that trail.
To me, I'd start training.
The twenty-fourth is DHBA twenty-three legislative session. And then there's also opioid settlement update. The twenty-fifth.
Pause on that one.
Sure.
So at ten o'clock, you've got two competing meetings. One is Annie's meeting at ten. And then the second is this opioid settlement meeting we need to divide and conquer here. Okay, what would be you guys' preference?
I'm wide open. Whatever, whatever works for everybody else. What, the opioid settlement and the?
Human Services. It's County Association or Human Services Directors Legislative Wrap-Up here.
Okay.
And that'd be a Zoom meeting?
Yes.
And then the opioid settlement?
I don't know what that one is. Robbie, do you?
This is the work session that former Commissioner Janet Rowland has asked for to meet with you guys and brief you on what they are proposing.
Okay.
I can take the Janet Rowland update and thing.
I can take the Janet Rowland updating thing.
Okay.
Okay, I'll do the opioid opioid.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Did you get that?
Well, no, we both said the same thing.
Yeah, you're both.
Differently.
You want to go do human services with them?
Yeah, yeah, I'll do human services.
And where will you be, Wendell?
Uh, probably do the opioid settlement meeting.
Okay, well, even as of this, then we won't need to public those Andy's meeting.
Okay.
Wonderful. Um, the twenty fifth, that we have an AGNC rightful board meeting. Are you all, do you all have that on your calendars? Do you, I'm attending that?
I probably won't. It's the control starts the next day, then.
Yeah, and that's in right law school. I may go over to the AGNC meeting.
Um. Then the Joel Symposium, so, uh, twenty sixth, twenty fourth. So that ends up, wraps our gym. Anything further?
Uh, Pioneer Days this weekend, starting Friday, Thursday nights, the Melodrama.
Are you in that?
No. I am pulling the church. Look, thank.
Oh, and then they have pancake breakfast Saturday morning starting at six.
And there is the Crawford Senior Center. I did see that they are doing a grand opening. I believe it is on the space, but they are grand opening this year. So Wendell, I think you and I should probably.
Let's, let's see if we can fit that in. Anything else, gentlemen?
I can't think of anything.
Very good. Thank you, Lindsay. Well, here comes fun stuff. Deputy's good scene. Linda, come on in. You don't get to stand up. So. Recently, um, Delta County was very um well represented in some uh citizen type of uh awards this year. Linda Reeves was recognized with the outstanding service to seniors for twenty twenty five. And, you know, Deputy Ruble was uh recognized for being the Law Enforcement Officer of the Year. He had tag for twenty twenty five. We couldn't let this opportunity pass to tell you guys thank you and how much we appreciate the work you guys do. It is, this is how we make better communities. And this is why Delta County is such a great place to live. So I'd like for us to come up here and get a picture, but I want to tell you personally, thank you. Uh, it means a lot to see the Delta County folks standing up there and being recognized the way you guys were. So very proud of you.
Yes, thank you very much.
So.
Yeah. I like to.
More stuff to these guys.
I'd like to relay a story that Linda told at one meeting or something that uh older veteran came in and he was very feeble and his wife was in a wheelchair. And so for them to come to the courthouse to meet with Linda, um, uh, was kind of a struggle because he had to bring his wife in. He didn't want to leave her in the car. They came into the office and he was kind of hard to hear. And so she relayed, we were kind of yelling at each other across the table, so I could hear him and he could hear me. So she made the suggestion, well, next time you need some, give me a call. I'll come to your house. And so she would go, continue to go to the house, so it was a lot easier for that uh veteran who was uh in the final years of his life, able there to get the benefits that he was entitled to. And Linda said, well, we sit at the kitchen table now and yell at each other across the kitchen table. But just her dedication to do something like that went above and beyond, and thank you very much. And for the police force and the TIG, the dog, thank you very much also.
Please come on up. You guys ready?
Ready.
Can we do another photo with the dog? We can see the dog.
Man, even German?
Yes.
Hey. I'll stand over here. Blind. Okay, one, two, three. Throw the ball to window.
He's like.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Yeah.
It's nice to you.
Thanks, Linda.
Congratulations. The people here, they're in for a needs, happy then. He's scared of one of the loved ones, so I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Derek.
You betcha.
I think a lot of you guys do that. Appreciate it.
Is there anything else to come for the board today?
Do we have? We don't.
Not with this, obviously, trial phone.
We should thank you for all you've done for our community, the miners' trail, the new playground on the fairground. You do a lot for this, you know, so thank you.
They went by there Sunday afternoon, five thirty, parking lot was packed, that that playground, kids crawling all over it.
That is great. That is great.
Well, thank you.
Well, our next meeting is the week from today, the seventeenth. Uh, we'll adjourn until then.
You don't. Meeting this afternoon.